Money living there, just go buy your dream house, huh? Have a wonderful retirement, travel the world. You're living on your children's retirement, I like that.
Good evening, everybody. This is the time and place for the City Council meeting of September 8th, 2015. Let's start with a roll call and determination of quorum.
Laverenti. Wright. Weyfenbach. Doyle. Estes. Lewis. Drew.
Here.
Roberts. Nordstrom.
Here.
Scott.
Here.
We have a quorum.
Thank you. And now we're on to the invocation by Pastor Jared Strong from Bethel Assembly, and then followed by the pledge of allegiance. And you're welcome to participate, but certainly not required.
Thank you, Mayor, City Council, appreciate it. Let's pray. Father, we thank you for the privilege to be in a place where we can speak to you, we can exercise our rights, and Lord, we thank you that we have that privilege. Lord, I pray tonight that your blessing and your wisdom will be upon our mayor and the council. I pray as they decide, as they look to our future, I pray that they will keep everything in mind. I pray that you will give us wisdom beyond even our experiences, that we might fulfill what it is that you lay out for us. God, I pray a blessing over our city leaders, their family, and their homes, and I pray, God, that you will be felt and known in every situation, in your name. Amen.
Thank you, everyone. Now we're on to the adoption of the agenda. And before we get started, I'd like to make a change and add item 1A, the recognition of the South Dakota Hall of Fame inductees. Moved by Louis.
Second.
Second by Doyle. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Okay, thank you. Any other changes to the agenda? Motion by Estes, second by Doyle, to approve. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Now we're on to awards and recognitions. Is Kevin Ott here? Do you want to bring others from your group? Kevin? All right, from the Air Force Sergeants Association. And they're here, we're going to read a proclamation honoring our patriots. Whereas, on September 11th, 2001, our nation, our freedoms and our way of life were attacked, not by a foreign military wielding weapons, but by a terrorist exploiting the very freedoms of living in the greatest nation on earth. Whereas, on that fateful day, 2,540 innocent men, women, and children going about their everyday lives, along with 418 first responders, were killed in New York City, the Pentagon, and in Shanksville, Pennsylvania. And whereas, since that day, over 6,800 American troops have been killed in action, with over 52,000 wounded in action in the global war on terrorism. And whereas, since September 11th, 2001, over 16,000 servicemen and women from our Ellsworth Air Force Base and the South Dakota National Guard have answered our nation's call by deploying to over 50 nations around the world. And whereas, by a joint resolution approved December 18th, 2001, the US Congress designated September 11th of each year as Patriot Day, and later requested the observance of September 11th as an annually-recognized National Day of Service and Remembrance. And whereas, the citizens of Rapid City, South Dakota, unite to say thank you to the courageous men, women, and veterans of the armed forces of the United States, and to all the first responders, past and present, for their service, dedication, and vigilance in defending and protecting our freedoms at home and abroad. Now therefore, I, Steve Allender, Mayor of Rapid City, on behalf of the Rapid City Council and the citizens of Rapid City, South Dakota, to hereby proclaim Friday, September 11th, 2015, as Honoring Our Patriots Day in Rapid City.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, thank you, the City Council, and to the citizens of Rapid City. Myself, I served for 30 years in the Air Force, 14 different assignments around the world and across the United States. I'm not just saying this because I'm standing here today in front of y'all, but without a doubt, Rapid City and the Black Hills is the military community to be a part of. And I'm particularly very proud to be part of this community here. And to celebrate and honor those that are still continuing to serve, like the lovely ladies here to my right, this Thursday, Main Street Square, the Honoring Our Patriots Concert, we encourage everybody to come out, enjoy some good music, some good times, and meet and thank a lot of our veterans, past, present, and our future folks as well. Thank you very much.
Now I'd like to call upon Chris LaCroix, Robert Mudge, and Doty Brown to come up, please. And also Dr. Richard Gowan. Come here, lineup will look like we're all on the same team. These, Mr. Mudge and Mrs. Brown are being inducted into the South Dakota Hall of Fame this coming Saturday. Is that right?
Right.
And Chris LaCroix is the wife of former Mayor Art LaCroix, and he too is being inducted into the Hall of Fame. It's a great honor to recognize these three for their contributions of service. Their inductions into the Hall of Fame will reflect their lifelong commitments of service that not only have impacted our community and its citizens, but also deserve recognition on a statewide level. South Dakota can be proud of these individuals, and Rapid City can be especially proud of them. The Depression brought Arthur LaCroix and his family to Rapid City in 1934. LaCroix graduated from Rapid City High School in 1942 and served in World War II. He was wounded in the Battle of the Bulge and received a battlefield commission with a Purple Heart. In 1956, he and two partners opened the Linoleum Center. LaCroix was active in the North Rapid Civic Association and was eventually elected to the Rapid City Common Council. In 1975, he was elected mayor and served a record six terms. Mayor LaCroix died in 2005 at the age of 82. Rob Mudge is co-founder and manager of four successful South Dakota corporations. He graduated from the South Dakota School of Mines with bachelor's and master's degrees in metallurgical engineering. His firms provide innovative, creative, and state-of-the-art services to national customers, including, in fact, international customers, including the Department of Defense and other energy, mining, and aerospace companies. He serves on numerous local boards, including Big Brothers and Big Sisters, Black Hills Area Community Foundation, Black Hills Works, the Children's Home Society, Rapid City Regional Hospital Foundation, South Dakota Mines Foundation, Rapid City Economic Development Partnership, Rapid City Chamber of Commerce, Western Dakota Tech, and the Center of Advanced Manufacturing at South Dakota Mines. And I don't know what he does in his free time. Doty, he volunteers in his free time. Doty Brown worked in the home health and hospice care fields for 40 years, including work with the South Dakota Department of Health, Pennington County, and Rapid City Regional Hospital. She developed innovative strategies to make home health and hospice available to underserved populations in rural communities. She initiated hospice services in the community and worked tirelessly to open an inpatient hospice house in 2007. For 10 years, she served on the National Association of Home Care Board of Directors and was board chairman in 2003.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is a privilege to be here on behalf of the South Dakota Hall of Fame. The mission of the South Dakota Hall of Fame is to champion a culture of excellence in South Dakota. We're very pleased that this weekend, we're going to have the opportunity to give these three people and seven more, there are 10 inductees, this medallion, which signifies on behalf of South Dakota, the privilege of being able to serve. Lieutenant Governor will present each one of these this medallion. And I ask you to just continue to give your support to the Hall of Fame, and most of all, give your support to the excellence of South Dakota. Thank you very much for letting us be with you. There'll be 10 folks who are going to be inducted this weekend, and they represent the best people that we in the South Dakota Hall of Fame can induct on behalf of all of South Dakota. Thank you very much.
And it's no, it's no gold medallion, but we have a certificate of appreciation for all three of these individuals.
I'm so short, I have to adjust it. I just want to acknowledge that I feel like this is a special honor for not just me, but all the people in home care and hospice in South Dakota. I think it's a, it's a very unique, special honor for me, but I just represent many people who have given so much to this community. And I'm grateful for Rapid City and actually the council, who supported the hospice house when we are raising funds for our wonderful facility, which is pretty much busy and full all the time. So I think we've done some good things in this community, and I feel very proud and honored that I got to be a part of that. So thank you for honoring me today.
I only wish that Art LaCroix could be here with us to receive this great honor. He would be so very proud. Thank you very much for everything.
I'm a little taller, Doty, so I'm going to raise this up if I don't break it first. At the Hall of Fame on Saturday, they give us five minutes to talk about excellence. Mayor, do you have a time limit?
No.
Okay, good. You know, truly, this is something that you don't expect. This is something that is really a surprise, and it's very humbling, and it's an honor. This is, this is, well, Mayor. But you know, they pick 10 of us, and they pick about 10 every year, have for the last 30 years or so. But you know, South Dakota is a culture of excellence. Many of you in this room, you folks right back there that have pondered, you could just as rightfully be up here as we can. I look at our fire department, our police folks, which I got to meet some of your folks about 1:00 AM this weekend on Saturday. But, I mean, truly, when you look around, the people that survived Atlas, you look at the dedication, like, you know, Doty and you talk about the hospice house, you look at some of the medical accolades that the hospital is now getting with the Magnet Awards. I mean, you can go on down the list over and over. South Dakota is indeed a place that a culture of excellence is every day. It's every day. You just have to look and see. And we are, we have been the ones that have been selected to be at the podium, and we're so grateful, and we're going to try to do the best we can to let South Dakota and our nation know that if you want excellence, South Dakota is the place to be. Thank you.
Again, you're not entertained?
Thank you, everyone. That was nice. I was also reminded, just a little while ago by Jerry Wright, that there are 40 German citizens from our sister city, Apolda, in town tonight. And although they must have found something better to do than come here, they are in town and... Okay, anyway, if you see them, if you see them, welcome them. Okay, now we are on to general public comment. And I see no speaker request form for the general public comment session. We do have a few speaker request forms for a little bit later in the agenda. So now on to the non-public hearing items, items 2 through 48. And I will open public comment on items 2 through 39. First, I'll call on Greg Convalin, who's going to speak on item number 39. And sir, there is a three-minute time limit.
I would just like, I'm Greg Convalin. I'm here on behalf of General Equipment Company. It's in regards to two new current model skid steer loaders. We would just like the council to take into consideration our bid. The bid that we bid was for a bigger machine with more horsepower, more lift capacity. Also, it was less money than the recommended bid. And we've supplied Bobcats to the landfill for quite a few years, and we'd sure like to keep them in the Bobcat skid steer loaders. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now on item number 21, we have Deborah Jensen.
Good evening, Mayor Allender, and members of the City Council. My name is Deborah Jensen. I'm a business and property owner on Mount Rushmore Road. I'm also president of the Mount Rushmore Road Group. The mission of the Mount Rushmore Road Group, since it was formed over 10 years ago, is to improve the safety and the aesthetics of Mount Rushmore Road for the community and for visitors, and to keep Mount Rushmore Road a viable corridor for Rapid City, to our downtown, our medical facilities, growth to the south of Rapid City, a business and historical destination, as well as retain its importance as a gateway to Mount Rushmore. This is our commitment. And businesses continue to show a willingness to sacrifice. These businesses supported City Council action to remove all on-street parking just a few years ago. Nearly all business access is permanently reduced to accommodate medians, wider sidewalks, and allow safer, more enjoyable travel for drivers and pedestrians alike. And businesses can expect a 30% to 60% revenue drop during construction. FYI, 2014 gross sales for Mount Rushmore Road totaled $112 million. The city's sales tax collection was about $1.6 million, and 2015 property valuations are over $60 million. The entire city has a vested interest in making Mount Rushmore Road an economically vibrant showcase and a springboard to our downtown and the rest of our beautiful city and to the Black Hills. This 107-page Mount Rushmore Road corridor study and design, as well as the 2020 comprehensive plan, represents a promise to invest in Rapid City's future. To stay consistent with the corridor study and the comprehensive plan, the Mount Rushmore Road Group had unanimously supported a zero-scape plan of rain gardens, trees, and corner nodes. However, we learned just a few weeks ago that engineers realized that a large MDU gas main that runs the entire length of the road on the west side cannot be moved. So that precludes some trees and eco-friendly rain gardens on the west side boulevards. Fortunately, Public Works Director Terry Woltersdorf and his staff realized money in their budget for colored concrete boulevards, keeping the corner nodes wherever they're possible, and other green projects involving property owners that keep this project consistent with the 2010 design. In fact, we appreciate our relationship with Terry and his open-door policy to meet and address the issues, and no doubt there will be a lot of them in the next three and a half years of construction. And we truly appreciate those words of encouragement at the recent Public Works meeting, and also the City Council meeting a few weeks ago, because we all need to work to move this project forward in the right way. Thank you.
Thank you. And on the same item, number 21, Lisa Modric.
Thank you, Mayor and City Council. I'm Lisa Modric, resident of Rapid City, business and property owner for quite a few years, and an officer of Mount Rushmore Road Group. And as we've come before you with the progresses and the excitement over a decade, and where we're at, and where we want to go, and how we continue to hold up our 107-page document of corridor study, which is designed for Mount Rushmore Road, and then tying it in with the planning that you have from the April 2014, to get us beyond, so that we are all the citizens of excellence of Rapid City. We can all wear our badge and be able to hand this forward to the generations that are beyond us. Because if we don't do this project right today, this is our only chance. This room won't be here along the next round. We'll be long gone, but we've got to pay it forward and pass it forward in order to generate more business and economic development and beautification and safety for the rest of our citizens onward. I want to just do a little housekeeping piece. We were written up in the, in the Rapid City Journal, and we took the hit real hard, and we were fine with that. But we never came before you with a million-dollar request. We came before you because we knew there was money in the budget. We didn't know how much. The first time we saw it was the first time you saw it. The numbers got tweaked, and they weren't right, and the document itself went out to the public and went out to the media. But there was no date, and there was no actual address of who presented it. So it did look like we were coming to you for a million dollars. But in fact, what we've been saying all along is follow the plan, follow the project, and let's get this baby done together. So that housekeeping is that, as of today, the August 25th date on that document still has some missed numbers, still off $100,000 because it's 5.1 million. So the top number needs to say 5.1 million. That means 798,000 in the hopper waiting to go towards this progress of this project, so that we can get it done and get it done right. Now, is it going to inflate on us? The likelihood is yes. We're not, we're not surprised by where the numbers are coming in from. We went to PIER and really worked with the Commission, Transportation Commission, to look at their adjustments and make the construction increases based on inflation. And thankfully, they did in order for us to break ground finally, after waiting for about five years. So those numbers need to be exact. And what I request from departments, as well as from the City Council, is when those items get linked, that they do get linked with the representation of those that are providing the information for you. We, our only request is really to follow the plan and follow the book and try to get as much as you can done in budget, but also be prepared. We still have at least two more years to go. And the latest word is it might go out to 2018. And these numbers are only going to get harder and harder on us. So let's get it done right, and let's get it done together. And we're going to do our part to help you get there, and we're going to do our part to help us get there too. But take care of those numbers and make sure that they balance, so we know exactly where we're all at on the page, same page, and we can work together. Thank you.
Thank you. And that will close our public comment on items 2 through 39. That takes us on to the consent items, 2 through 39. Are there any items on this list that would like, you'd like to remove? Jerry Wright? 21, 38, and 39. Go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 26, please.
Okay. And John Roberts?
Item number 36, please.
Okay. Then kind of a motion to approve the remainder of the items, with the exception of 21, 38, 39, 26, and 36. Moved by Louis, second by Wright. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion passes. Now on to item 21. Jerry Wright? Jerry Wright.
Thank you, Mayor. I've asked, and Terry's going to talk about updating that form, and I think that for the benefit of the council, the estimate that was put together on August twenty-fifth that was presented at Public Works reflects that it's true that funding number for Vision was five-point-one million, and the cost that was estimated to date, including close approximation of expenditures for Phase One, which is from Tower Road to Florman, and Phase Two to Phase Three, which is the Florman Road down to Kansas City, is about five-point, or five-million-two-hundred-seventy-seven thousand. And the five-point-one gives us a shortfall of approximately one-hundred-and-seventy-seven thousand. That's not bad for a project that's been delayed about a year or two. A whole lot better than the million dollars. And I think it's actually, if things go out as estimated by the architect, the ten blocks are set at seventy thousand, will be sixty-six thousand, which is another forty thousand. We're down to counting pennies, but we're way better shape than we were as we were looking at the original report. So we can proceed, and no, we're not a million dollars behind, and it's well, well within our range. Thank you.
Okay. Thank you. And Amanda, is this on twenty-one? Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Woltersdorf a question, please?
Yes.
Terry, I am a little confused, because during the conversations that we had over a two-to-three-week period, the way I understood it as well is that the request for the beautification that came out of Option Three or whatever is what was going to push the price up to that million dollars. Did that get lost along the way? I'm trying to figure, because at the time that you came back and we met, you had indicated that the budget, the Rapid City portion of the budget for beautification probably couldn't even afford the colored concrete, but we could go with the original design, and I don't know if it's that one-hundred-and-seventy-six-page corridor study or not, but the original design called for greenscape, grass, and then some pitchers had trees, but the original design just called for grass to be maintained in there. So can you help me understand the gyrations that happened over those two or three weeks, please?
I'll do my best. And yes, the budget numbers, the one sheet that was linked, was generated by our office. We'll make sure the next time we update that, that it gets put on our letterhead and it's dated properly, so everybody knows exactly where those numbers are being generated from. Reality is, the biggest change that happened from the last council meeting and this council meeting is that we got firm price numbers from Black Hills Power and Light for the first phase of putting those utilities underground, really from Cathedral up to St. Patrick Street, basically. And those numbers came in about four-hundred-thousand dollars under the previous budget. So that was a four-hundred-thousand-dollar cost savings there. That's the biggest change that happened here. The reality is, without that, and if we had done all of the improvements that they had requested, we would have been asking for approximately a million dollars, give or take. With that cost savings and looking at just putting the decorative concrete in, once we pinpointed some numbers down, we feel comfortable, there's money in the budget to absorb that additional cost for that colored concrete, above and beyond what the South Dakota Department of Transportation is going to do. We're estimating at about one-hundred-seventy-five thousand for the remainder of the corridor. And, you know, looking at that updated budget numbers, we, if things come in according to our estimates, we could have seven-hundred thousand left. Reality is, construction prices are going up astronomically every year, it seems like, above and beyond what your normal cost of living is. And the other thing to keep in mind is there's a component of that corridor study that we have not addressed yet, and I would, I'd like the opportunity to address it if there's some funds remaining at the end of the third phase, and that's the downtown section from Kansas City down to Omaha. We currently have no plans to do improvements there, but the corridor study does talk about upgrading decorative lighting. It calls for some landscape medians and one of the large monument markers on the north end of the corridor. We have one programmed in on the south end. We haven't found the location yet that works on the north end. So those are some of the moving pieces we're still trying to kind of plug in. That's kind of a long answer to your, to your question there, but keep in mind, this budget sheet is a living document. It's going to be updated as the new construction numbers come in and as we get further into designing these future phases.
So your current budget, based on the data that's come in as far as firm cost from the utilities and that type of stuff, but your budget that is going to incorporate the five-point-one million dollars out of the Vision Fund does cover all three phases?
Correct.
So the savings realized with this MDU pipe of savings of five, four-hundred-thousand dollars, and cutting back on Option Three that was proposed to the Mount Russian Group, Mount Rushmore Group, is what is putting us back in budget. Is that correct?
It wasn't the MDU line, it's the Black Hills Power and Light.
Oh, sorry about that.
Correct.
Black Hills Power and Light, but cutting back or not going with the Mount Rushmore Group's recommendation for enhanced beautification and the four-hundred-dollar savings on the Black Hills Power and Light install is what's putting us back in budget?
Correct.
All right. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Now on to Jerry Wright.
Thank you. I just wanted to reiterate what Terry said, that he will keep us up to date on a regular basis as projects completion comes in and costs, so we'll know where we're at, and he'll keep the project monitors on board. Thank you.
Is there a motion on twenty-one? Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I make a motion to approve item twenty-one. Like to keep the floor if I can keep, have a second.
Second from Charity Doyle. And go ahead, Mr. Estes.
Thank you. I spoke, I think, at length at Public Works. You know, I shared your concern, Amanda, that the first round showed about two-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand, and then, of course, we got the invoice from Black Hills Power, and that, and they bill for actual costs on that. So that was a savings of four-hundred, and then if you changed the five million to five-point-one, we end up with about seven-hundred-and-ninety-eight thousand. And of course, that's if all bids in Phase Two and Three, in a perfect world, come in. But, so I feel comfortable right now, in my mind, is all we're approving is about one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand dollars extra out of this seven-ninety-eight to fund the colored concrete at this time. And I, and I think, I think that's the right thing to do. You know, I agree with you. I voiced a concern the other day that they asked us to follow the plan, and the plan shows grass. It didn't specify whether it was seed or sod, but grass and trees. And, and that Concept Three was considerably more than that. But in light of all that, I think that this is the right thing to do, rather than have grass. I think the colored concrete right now is the right place to spend one-hundred, I believe it's about one-hundred-and-seventy-four thousand. And hopefully, the bidding process over the next couple of years doesn't eat, eat everything else up. Thank you.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for approval. All those in favor of the item? Opposed? Motion passes. On to item number thirty-eight. Jerry Wright.
I believe we're on to item number twenty-six, Mayor.
Fine.
Item number twenty-six is to approve the update to Mid-Continent Communications to increase the broadband width for the fire stations. And I'll yield the floor as I have questions, in case anyone wants to make a motion.
Motion to approve by Lewis, second by Drew, and back to Amanda.
Thank you, Mayor. May I address a question to Chief Maltevern, please?
Yes, ma'am.
Chief, I'm playing catch-up since I was out of town last week, but when I pulled up the documentation on this, it had two contracts attached to it, but then it also had what it would cost going forward, but I could not put the numbers together to see what you're getting, what it cost before, and how much of an increase it is for what you're getting. I mean, what services or what added advantages is the fire station's getting for the increased amount of money? And what is, I mean, if we're talking ten cents, I could probably vote for this.
Thank you.
I'll be completely honest, I can't probably answer all of your questions tonight, but what I can tell you is what the deficiencies are at our facilities and what this upgraded contract will do for us. And then if need be, I can provide more information in terms of where we were previously with how we paid for this and how much it costs, and then what it would cost for the future. But, and as I real quick combed through as you were pulling it, I see that there's probably a lack of information for you, and certainly what you'd be looking for. But what I can tell you is this is an upgrade to our telecommunications at our fire stations. We have seven stations strategically located throughout the community, and they, we can't bring them all to one location to communicate on a daily basis, whether that be training or just inter-facility communications. So what we do is, we utilize a lot of web-based training aids that we subscribe to, and obviously a lot of data gets pushed through the internet, just so those crews can stay in their station, in their neighborhood. So we just recently switched over to a web-based meeting tool, if you will. So just this morning, I got on and addressed the department through a camera, and that video was live-streaming to our facilities, and then they, in turn, can ask questions. And it's a pretty good tool for us, certainly brings us up into a modern-day communicating platform. So that's what we're trying to accomplish. And then I know that there's an increase, there's a one-time fee for some of the internet packaging, and then there is an increase to our monthly payment for those services from Mid-Continent.
And that's the information that is currently not provided tonight?
Okay.
I would appreciate it if my colleagues would continue this. Is this time-sensitive?
I'm sure we can pull something together and have it ready for you in two weeks, if you'd like.
I would appreciate it if one of my colleagues would go ahead and make that motion to continue this item for two weeks, so we can get the needed information, so that we can have our questions answered.
Motion by Wright to continue for two weeks, second by Lorente. Seeing no other speaker buttons, all those in favor of continuing, say aye. Those opposed? Motion carries. And now we're on to item thirty-six. John Roberts. Oh. All right. Number thirty-six. Hold on, I'll take your, I'll stop your timer. Item number thirty-six. Approve award of total schedule A and B plus alternative, alternate one for country road water transmission main extension North Rapid High Level and Country Road and One-Hundred-and-Forty-third Avenue Water Transmission Main Extension Low Level, project number fourteen-dash-twenty-one-seventy-three and fourteen-twenty-one-seventy-four. Bids opened on September one, two thousand and fifteen, to the lowest responsible bidder, Lind Exco Inc., in the amount of two-million-nine-hundred-twenty-two dollars fifty-five cents. John?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a couple of questions for our Public Works Director, if he doesn't mind. Terry, I've had quite a few questions from constituents on this. Over the past four years, you and I have had a lot of conversation on scheduling things by priority. Can you explain to my constituents why this is a priority? And I'll just give you one example. You know what problems we've had in the Knollwood area with water pressure. So why is this? Some of the questions that I've been asked is, there is such a large amount of undeveloped property out there. I mean, there's very few people that are actually going to be using this service line compared to two-million dollars that could be put into an area like the Knollwood area. So I was just wondering if you could explain how this gets put on the priority list.
I'll do my best. This one is probably what I would call more development-driven than maintenance-upgrade-driven. We certainly have development that's occurring up there on Country Road. This connection in this loop will provide the adequate service for our future development. This is being funded out of our utility support fund, part of that twenty-two-million-dollar bond that was approved three, three and a half years ago. So this really is a development-driven project. These projects are necessary so that we can get adequate fire flows and adequate water up to those new developments as they build out, and they're building out as we speak. So keep in mind, we also make a substantial amount of improvements in the existing infrastructure. We know that there are some areas that, in the Knollwood, that I know have lower pressure, but still, my understanding is, meet the current standards, probably not as high as some people would like, but I don't know that we have areas down there right now that are under the pressure that we, that we recommend in our design criteria manual. But it's a balancing act for us. Every year, we spend money that's for development and expansion of the facility for new developments occurring, but we also invest a substantial amount of money upgrading our existing infrastructure.
And that's one of the questions, comes back to, one of the questions that I was asked, too, is, this is getting paid for out of the, one of the enterprise funds, or two of the enterprise funds, correct, out of water enterprise funds?
This one, almost all of this one, I shouldn't say all of it, because I think the larger portion of it is being paid for out of the utility support fund, which is a sales tax fund. That's the Point One-Six Fund, is what it used to be known as. And one part of this, though, is being paid out of the water enterprise fund.
Okay. And that's one of the questions I had about the water enterprise fund financing this as being a development-driven project, because the ratepayers are paying for the development rather than, you know, the funded through the sales tax.
I believe the water enterprise fund is paying for the portion that is doing some, some of the pressure upgrades to some of the, there's also some pressure upgrades, some of the existing.
Some of the existing places?
Well, yes.
Okay. Thank you very much, Terry.
Mr. Roberts, would you tell us again where your interest is? Knollwood Drive? Is that what you said?
Mind if I speak again?
Go ahead.
Terry knows, I don't know, what was it, three, four years ago when we first started looking into that, right after I got on the council? We had a numerous amount of people that came forward with low pressure. The city had helped quite a few people in that area, I believe, put in pressure tanks to help bring up pressure in a lot of the homes down there. But as far as I know, there hasn't been any upgrades on the water system in that area, and a lot of other areas in North Rapid for many, 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 many years, just like a lot of the other infrastructure projects around town. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Now go to Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My questions are for Mr. Woltersdorf. Terry, what are the developments that are driving this?
Be very frank, I don't know that I have the name of the developments off the top of my head. I know that there are some off of the country road, north of the country road area there, the east of Haynes Avenue, north of Country Road. I don't know that there's a lot of developments on the One-Forty-third area. The One-Forty-third Avenue, though, is the, is the loop that we're creating.
Right. Oh, I was thinking farther down Country Road, that's why. So you're talking, so you're talking east of, or west of? I mean, east, just, just east of Haynes?
It's east of Haynes, west of One-Forty-third.
Then it'll come off that high-pressure water system that's up there?
Yes.
Okay. Now, I remember when we put that in, and that was part of the reason that went in, was to develop that. If I remember right, I think a lot of that is paid for with a tax district up there, the high-pressure water.
I don't recall.
Okay. So it's just going to go partly, it's not going all the way down to like the soccer fields or anything like that?
No, this does not extend east of One-Forty-third.
Okay, then, okay. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Brad Estes.
These questions make me want to ask, Terry, is this the high-pressure continuation of the high pressure? Because there's two zones, that's the border of two zones out there.
It actually encompasses a portion of both, I believe.
Okay, because I was thinking the low-pressure zone was coming from the other direction.
I believe that's correct.
Okay. Thanks.
Okay, we're still on item thirty-six. I don't believe we have a motion. Motion, and then second by Darla Drew. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Those opposed? One no from John Roberts. Motion passes. Now, we are on to item thirty-eight. Jerry Wright. For crying out loud. Approve award of base bid without trade-in, one new current-model-year articulated loader, open September one, two thousand and fifteen, to the lowest responsible bidder, Butler Machinery, in the amount of three-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-three-hundred dollars. in the amount of three hundred seventy-six thousand, three hundred dollars. Jerry Wright.
I know it's only three hundred dollars, but would you explain why we're not going to the actual low bidder of three seventy-six thousand versus three seventy-six three? Terry, please.
I don't have a level of detail on what specifications this one didn't meet, but my understanding is this one and the next one, we're going to be talking about, there were, there were specific specifications mainly that dealt with maintenance of the, of the equipment that, that the lowest bidders did not meet. That's why we went with the piece of equipment that did meet the specifications we wrote.
You don't recall on this specific item?
On this one, I do not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, item number thirty-eight, we don't have a motion. Is there a motion on the floor?
Move to approve.
Move to approve by Darla Drew, second by Chad Lewis. Are you pushing your button? Go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Again, I, I guess I would just like to let my colleagues know that unless there's a motion made to continue this until we can get some more information, I'll most likely be voting no on this one. Thank you.
Brad Estes.
I'm sorry.
Okay, Terry Wolsterdorf.
I was just going to say if, if you guys would like to continue this at the Public Works next week, I can certainly have Carl Murbach come down and we can put a memo together that, that clearly spells out the specifications that were not met and he can give his reasoning behind why he did not go with a low bidder on these.
I'll make a motion that affects.
Second. Okay, we have a motion to continue to the next, what'd you say, legal finance?
Public Works.
Substitute motion to the next Public Works by Jerry Wright and who seconded?
Yep.
Ron Wyffenbach?
Thanks.
Okay, all those in favor of continuing it?
Aye.
Say aye. Those opposed? Okay, the item is continued. Now on to item thirty-nine.
I'd like to make motion to this, we contend you to the next Public Works for further information. Same issues?
Yes, I do. Thank you. Okay, item number thirty-nine is to approve award of base bid with no trade-in for two new current model year skid steer loaders, open September one, two thousand fifteen, to lowest responsible bidder, RDO Equipment Company, in the amount of one hundred, one thousand dollars. Motion on the floor is to continue it to the next Public Works. And there was a second?
Yes.
Ron Wyffenbach and Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. And may I address a question or a recommendation to Mr. Terry Wolsterdorf as well, please?
Go ahead.
Thank you. Terry, my question on this one before it was, the motion was made to continue it, so if we're going to take it back to Public Works, the information I would, I found confusing on this one is that the bid went out with the trade-in and yet it's being recommended to go to the lowest bidder without the trade-in. And so what happened that the criteria was with the trade-in and then it was being proposed to have no trade-in? And I know an item that we approved earlier did list two pieces of equipment that were going to be used for trade-ins, so.
We can clarify that next week. I, I think these had trade-ins, it's just the difference in the way they were worded. I, I think the recommendation was to award it without the trade-in on this one as well. But there are trade-ins available, we just didn't take them because they, the bidder we were going with did not offer much for a trade-in value, but we can clarify that next, next Tuesday.
Well, then, because my question is, is like I said, an item that was on the consent calendar earlier that we all approved and I assumed that they were for these trade-ins on this vehicle is that there was some property that was declared, I can't think of the word now, but it was declared surplus, thank you, it was declared surplus and that the utilization of those pieces of equipment was going to be used as trade-ins. So do we need to reopen that item and re-address that item or continue it as well if they're not going to be used for trade-ins? Because isn't it that when the city council approves items for surplus that we have to identify what they're going to be used for?
I, I don't believe thirty-seven had a trade-in in the bid schedule. Thirty, so looking at the bid schedule, thirty-seven did not include a trade-in piece of equipment, so there's no value there. The other two that are going back to Public Works had equipment that were in the bid schedule for trade-in.
So are you saying that the trade-ins will be utilized on the purchases? I'm referring back to item number thirty on the consent calendar declaring miscellaneous personal property as surplus and it was annotated that they would be used for trade-ins.
Oftentimes, what will happen if we don't get the value that we think we should when we bid these items out like this and we have a potential trade-in, we offer this as, as trade, if we don't get the value we think it's worth, we just won't give the piece of equipment to them and we'll surplus it a different way hoping that we get a better value out of it. We'll go to a public auction or auction it off and we have our city auction.
So I'm just asking about the legality since the city, since it was specified. Does it matter that it was specified as a trade-in and the city then, we can identify surplus and how we're going to deal with it in any, a specific way, but then we can deal with it willy-nilly any way we want to?
Let's go to the city attorney for that.
You know, without having looked at the specific spec, I don't want to get into details, but I think in the past what we've done is spec it as trade-in as an option because there, it's rarely ever, it's definitely going to be traded in because we're speculating, we don't know what the value is. We generally, in my experience, want to know what they'll give us in trade-in and so it's given as an option just to see, but I haven't seen the specific specification in this case.
Follow-up question, Mayor?
Yes.
To Joel Adine, then Joel, on this one, I, I guess my, my bigger concern then, and maybe you can answer this portion of it. If we have identified property as surplus, can the departments take it back and incorporate it back into their fleet? Because city council is under the impression this is going to be relieving the fleet maintenance and if it's not actually surplus traded in or sold off, does it go back into the fleet for, for continued usage and more cost on the maintenance and repair?
I suppose it technically could because frankly, no one would know, but, other than the departments, but I suspect that in general, it's just as the Public Works Director indicated, if you don't take the trade-in, it's just surplus in a different way. If you don't feel you're going to get the value for it. If they were going to put it back into service, then I think that would take additional council action to essentially declare it unsurplus and put it back. But I think generally, I know in the past, maybe there's another agency that decided, even though it was old for us, we'll provide it to another agency or something if we're not going to get value for it as a trade-in.
Okay, I think our finance officer wants to weigh in on this.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The resolution to surplus is what is required and if you recall, and there's even in this resolution where in the general statement, it talks about surplus trade or scrap type of scenarios. It was requested by the council to be more specific, but I don't believe that that is required as long as you have that general statement. There have been times, especially in recent years, where we've surplus stuff intending to, to sell it at auction or intending to trade it in and then it was requested that before we put anything on the auction, we send the whole surplus list that we had compiled throughout the year around to all the other departments and see if any of them want them and then if they do, they have first dibs on it. So there are times that it has been surplus and that list goes around and other departments will take it. Sometimes it's a vehicle, most of the time it's office equipment-type stuff, but it does happen. As far as the, the bids, state law requires you to give to the lowest bid that meets specifications, period. It doesn't, because in that regard, if, if there is somebody that doesn't meet specifications and they appear to be the lower bid, then, say in this instance of three hundred dollars, if you gave that same exception to the next lowest bidder, maybe they would have come in even lower and you don't know that because what is bid out lists the specifications that you want. So I know why you're asking the questions because it is only three hundred dollars, but state law doesn't allow that leeway. If, if none of them meet specifications, you, then you really should go out for, for rebidding it. But if, if two of them meet your specifications, one does not, you are required to give the lowest, to the lowest bidder who meets specifications. In instances of trade-in value, you don't look at the net. State law requires you to look at each piece individually and basically what you would pay outright for the piece of equipment. So in this case, there could have also been somebody whose outright purchase price was higher, but they gave more in trade-in, so the net would have been less. Doesn't matter. State law requires you to give it to the lowest bidder for gross. My office deals with this so frequently between the departments and the audit and all of that. So if there's any other questions that, in general, regarding the bidding process, please let me know, I'd be happy to help you. Obviously, I can't tell you what the, the specs are that they did not meet, but the department has determined that they have not met those specifications, it really doesn't even matter according to state law. Thank you.
And then just for clarification, then Pauline, as a follow-up, then when, when the city declares or the city council declares personal property surplus and it does get picked up by another department, you've had a lot of experience with this, there's nothing wrong with that and city council doesn't have to retake back our surplus resolution or anything else at that point, then?
No, you sure don't. It's just something that, that happens and it's absorbed into another department and it just doesn't show up on the, on the auction list.
Okay, thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay, we go on to Jerry Wright. Reminder, there's a motion on the floor to send this to the next legal finance. Jerry Wright.
Just to add a little more discussion before you answer hopefully some of the questions. In the past, when I used to buy a lot of the machinery, we would specify a cash price so that we were, knew we were getting what they really wanted for the machine and the trade-in was an option. That way, we had it as an option. That way, we knew we were not getting a price that was artificially inflated or whatever. So we actually knew what they were wanting for the machine and the trade-in value had to be appraised either by the manager or maintenance fleet manager, someone to come up, is that a reasonable price and you could do it through the Dodge book or some other estimating equipment to find out what it's worth. I think we'll get that information hopefully at our next, at Public Works. But it's, that's the reason it was done that way, so you could have, you knew a true price and if, if the trade-in was not good, but you wanted the machine, it was a good price, you bought it. You didn't have to do the trade-in.
Okay, under Ron Wyffenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Alderman Scott, for bringing this up because now this really raises another red flag that I'm hoping we could interduct into this also as of, anybody who goes down and trades a car in realizes the bottom line is what you pay, whether you pay ten thousand dollars minus eight or ten, you know, twelve thousand minus ten. So I'd like to see this, where this trade-in is actually, if we can see the, the rule or law that says that we can't, that we have to take the lowest base bid when in fact somebody's giving you nine thousand dollars more for the same piece of equipment, that drops the price down by nine thousand dollars. There's a difference of actually nine thousand dollars, not three hundred dollars if we're going to trade this piece of equipment in. So I'd like to see where that state law, that, that kind of defies common sense, but that doesn't surprise me. But if we could add that on or maybe I could just send Pauline an email, so, I mean, truly you're looking at the bottom line, if you're trading it in, there's a huge difference, not just three hundred bucks, but nine thousand bucks. So thank you.
Seeing no more speaker. Pauline Sumption.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. It is South Dakota codified law five dash eighteen A dash fourteen. That talks about the trade-in being the cash price.
One more time.
Five dash eighteen A dash fourteen.
Okay, thank you. And now the motion in the second is to send this back to the next Public Works. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Now we're on to the non-consent items forty through forty-eight and we'll open public comment on items forty through forty-eight. And we have one speaker request, Kurt Pochhardt? Polkhardt?
Polkhardt.
Okay, on item forty-eight.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Kurt Polkhardt. And this concerns item number forty-eight, the proposal to remove the city council from involvement in the advising consent role for the, the secretary in the mayor's office. As I pointed out at legal and finance last week, you all know, that person served not only the mayor, but also the council and so there's a very legitimate purpose for having the council involved in reviewing the, the person who's being selected for that position. It's an important position in our town, right, Kay? Kay did it admirably for many years. But the, the council has a necessary role in this process. It's legitimate because the council is my voice in this process. I'm concerned about the political spoils system and allowing the, the mayor to go ahead and appoint an individual that he or she may choose to fill this role without involvement of the council. That, there was a reason that this was put in place a few years ago and that was for a good reason. And the process is not broken. This is not a cumbersome process. It's, it's essentially what the council does. The council will review, as you've just been doing, the operations that go on here in City Hall with the, with Public Works, with legal and finance, with the attorney's office. There's some detail to what you do. It's not a, not a burdensome process, it's not cumbersome. It's necessary and proper for the council to have this role. You probably recall that about a year ago, the council did get involved in the selection by the mayor for replacement of the chief of police. That was proper for the council to get involved there. And this, this position is no less important in our community than the chief of police. Political patronage is poor public policy and I would urge you to leave the system that we have in place.
Thank you. Let's close the public comment on these items and we'll go on to item number forty, which is the second reading of ordinance number six zero six eight, supplemental appropriation number three for two thousand fifteen and the recommendation is to approve. Do I have a motion?
Move to approve.
Darla Drew made a motion and Richie seconded. Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mary, thank you, Mayor. Not Mary, Mayor. May I address a question to Pauline Sumption, please?
Yes.
Pauline, just want to clarify, there were no other additional changes to the supplemental appropriation number three since the first reading.
I believe there was one, but you guys had approved it at the legal and finance meeting and I'm trying to remember which one that was for, I think. I honestly, I can't remember what you, what it was for.
Well, I remember for our first reading, there were two items and we moved in the legal and finance committee meeting, two weeks ago, we moved the items around so that we were actually approving the expenditure from undesignated cash for the downtown report or survey being done. That was to offset the shortage of the funds to fund the entire study because the downtown bid board, I believe, and then Brett Limbaugh's department was going to make up the rest of it, but it was a hundred thousand. But that was included in the supplemental number three. So I just want to make sure there were no other changes from first reading to second reading.
It doesn't look like there were. Usually those are highlighted if there are, so it does not look like there were.
Okay. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay, the recommendation is to approve. Is there a motion? We didn't already do this, did we? Okay, everyone in favor? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion carries. Item number forty-one.
Thank you, Mayor. May I read it in?
Time out. Before we get into this, I just want to remind everybody that we, that you, the council, has a set of rules for debate. Those rules are a little confusing and conflicting because they give you five minutes to speak per item and up to twice to total five minutes. That's really hard to enforce. And sometime when things are a little calmer, I'll probably bring a proposal to you to clarify that a little bit. So I expect there's going to be a little debate here, which is good, but keep in mind, we've already had debate on this in at least two public hearings and there are other items on the agenda. So now this is, this is one of those where no means yes and yes means no. The motion, the recommendation is to deny, so if you, if you vote aye, you are voting to deny. If you vote no, you're voting to pass. Is that correct?
It depends on what the motion tonight is.
Okay, let's go on with it. Amanda?
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 41 is resolution number 2015-091, resolution of intent to take the statutory authorized increase in property tax revenue as part of the annual appropriation ordinance for 2016. I make a motion to not take the CPI.
Okay, the motion by Amanda, and the second by Ron Weifenbach.
And if I could retain the floor, Mayor?
Go ahead.
I'll make my five minutes very short and sweet. As the mayor's indicated, we have had a lot of discussion on this. I have expressed the reasons why I am not supporting taking the CPI for this year. That does not mean that I will not consider it in some other budget, but this budget is not Mayor Allender's budget, and the answers that the city council members have put forth as far as justifying the increase of the CPI really have not been answered to my satisfaction. So based on my constituents or for my constituents, I will be not supporting taking the CPI in the 2016 budget. I yield the floor.
Thank you. Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. Try that again. Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to just throw some things into perspective here. So my understanding is this CPI will generate about $224,000. And, you know, a lot of people have been asking, what does that mean? What does that mean to me? What does that mean in the larger picture? Some of the things that, although this wasn't Mayor Allender's budget, per se, some of the things that have impacted it, we have the repsity fire department, just workers' comp premiums went up in 2016 by $247,000 almost. That's just one department. Our electric costs for the general fund departments is going to go up $182,551 in 2016. Natural gas, another, almost $33,000. So there's a lot of things that are going into this. Something that puts it in a slightly different perspective for me is, if you think about someone working out in the private sector, and it's raise time, everybody is expecting their cost of living increase, not necessarily a performance raise, but a cost of living increase. And if you don't give them that cost of living increase, what do they think? They're not doing a good job. You don't value them, you know, there's these different things. And I just thought about that in the grander scheme of the city, that if you're not keeping level, or just being able to stay where you're at with providing that level of service, then really what we're asking the city to do is to provide lesser service, which ironically is one of the things we get dinged for. So I think it's a challenge, and I just would appreciate it if my colleagues would consider what those dollars really mean in the larger picture. And we're talking $5.03 per $100,000 valuation. So it's not a lot of money, but it is something to hedge against that inflationary, I guess, reaction out there in the marketplace, so that we can continue to provide the same service next year that we did this year. Thank you.
Thank you. Jerry Wright.
My only position's going to be this, and that is that approximately one-fourth of our general fund budget, give or take, is property tax. And we know we've had increased costs in the general fund operations, with police, fire, streets, sanding, snow removal, streetlights, whatever. And if we do not increase that tax base, one of the tax bases, whether it's sales tax and fees, then I think that we're reducing our ability to pay our bills, and we're going to be taking money from somewhere else to make up for it. So I would suggest that if the CPI does not pass, we take that $224,000 and ask the mayor to take it back to his budget and reduce the budget by that amount. So that we're paying, we're living within our means. Otherwise, to meet our costs, we need to raise our taxes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Tough as that sounds, we have to do it.
All right. Ron Weifenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I understand that things cost more money, and I understand in the real world what it takes to run a business, and I understand that there's a lot of people out there that won't be in business tomorrow. There's a lot of people that won't have jobs tomorrow. They may have to switch jobs, whatever the case may be. I truly don't support the CPI, and one of the reasons is, it kind of rolls into what this whole council talks about. I've been up here advocating against the tax districts that we, when the growth comes, we provide services for those new areas, just like we did tonight, provided $2 million for a water line for a new area that's not even built yet. But yet, we do nothing for the people that are already here and have been here and paid taxes for several years. I mean, the water and sewer, the roads they drive on. At one point in time, I had asked for the vision fund to be separated from the other funds. This council voted not to do that, and the reason was to allocate more money towards roads, so we could eliminate some of that issue. I've used this scenario to try to help people understand, and it's, if you watch the NBA, you watch the NFL, one of the things that you'll find out about the teams that go to the Super Bowl are the teams that do the basic things correctly. We get a little bit too fancy up here with all these different things that we're doing, and putting money here, putting money there. And until we get good at doing the basic things, we shouldn't be raising anybody's taxes. As a councilperson, we are, that is part of our position, is to get the most bang for our buck, and I don't think we're doing it. I don't think we're even close. There's plenty of room for opportunity. We had a compass committee that was put into place at some point in time that was set to find synergies. It met with huge, huge, like hitting a roadblock. Oh, we don't want to do that. What are you talking about? You want to save money? Kidding me? Let's get rid of that. So we got rid of that this year, and I think it was budgeted for $250,000. That money has already been ate up. Somebody was polite enough to print out, and the comment was made about how much per $100,000 it costs. So somebody was polite enough to print out all of our taxes up here, and let me tell you, let me just take mine, Ron Weifenbach, his went up $300 before the CPI. Charity Doyle's, hers went up $300 before the CPI. This is taxes that are going to be payable. Couple peoples went down, I won't name them because they might get rocks thrown at them. Chad Lewis's went up 240 bucks. Brad Estes's went up 250 bucks before the CPI. So when they talk about $10 per thousand, wait a second, we're talking about valuations that increase and all that, and the growth that the council takes. And the council has decided not to dip into some of the sales tax revenues that are generated by some of the same people that use the services. The tourists that come to our town use our services. They use our roads, they use our water, they use our streets, sewer, all that stuff. But yet, we neglect to take some of that back and put it into our infrastructure. It's time that we made a real decision and the right decision. Take a little bit of the pressure off, give our mayor a chance. He's made the comment earlier that he can handle this next year and bring us back a budget with some opportunity. And I think, I think we weigh that out, give it a chance, and we don't pass the CPI. We just take it, and we learn how to get better at our jobs, how we take a little bit of control on what we're spending, look at, I talked to one of the council people up here about the Journey Museum and the Dolphine Art Center, some of these arts things that bring people to our community. They bring people to our community, yet they are, they get nothing back, other than what they do, they put in a lot of volunteer time, they get nothing back from the bid board. Nothing, not a thing. The Civic Center and the CVB take all that money. There's an opportunity there to look at that and go, hey, they should be getting a little piece of that pie, because they're bringing people to our community. They may not bring 3,000 for a concert, but I'm telling you, if you add it up over a period of time, it's probably pretty darn close, the same amount of numbers they bring. So there's opportunities there, if we're willing to do our jobs up here. So that being said, thank you.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Charity Doyle.
Thank you, Mayor. I just want to make one more comment. Darla Drew and I were visiting with DIA this morning, and there are a lot of questions about the CPI and how that all works. And although, you know, I would agree with some of what Alderman Weifenbach says, I just don't want anyone to be left with the impression that these increases that we've seen are going to the city. It's about 18 to 19% of your property tax bill that actually goes to the city, and that amount is about commensurate with what it takes us to pay for the police department. Everything else comes from sales tax, and I just want to make sure that that's clear, where those things are going. So most of it goes to the school, county, the city does get a small portion of that. Thank you.
Thank you. Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And I appreciate Alderman Weifenbach bringing up the property taxes that somebody carefully put together for us here on the council, and I think it's important, because it goes right to the heart of what I've brought up before recently in this debate, which is, we're being told by the people who want to increase the burden on the taxpayers, is that it's really just to cover the inflationary costs for government. The fact of the matter is, there are revenue sources that increase every year, and I've talked about them. It sounds like some of our council people have taken great, or taken some time to put together some of the increased expenses to the city. Unfortunately, they haven't spent as much time defending their constituents, the citizens, in coming up with the amount of increased revenue that they have paid to this city, but are not demanding anything new from this city. And that is exactly what these property tax increases are for specifically us and thousands of people living here in Rapid City, who are paying $200 or $300 more regardless, in spite of the CPI, and 18% of that approximately will come to the city. So what is the city doing with all of these increased revenues that aren't demanding any new services, which is all of us who pay more property taxes, which the city gets 18% of? What is the city, why is that not covering the inflationary costs? Why is the increased revenue that the city sees when they spend their increases in their wages? They aren't asking for any new city services, but they are spending more of their income here in Rapid City than they had in the previous year. Why is that not? And why do we not know the amount of that? Why is it that there are some on this council who know, or purporting that there are expenses and inflationary costs that the city sees, but they're not advocating for all of their property tax owners in their ward, who are seeing increases in their property taxes and are spending more of their income in Rapid City? And they're not getting to hear from their representation why that doesn't cover the inflationary costs to government? Why is that, why is that the case? And ladies and gentlemen, if you're listening out there, I think what you need to keep in mind is this, that if you want to make sure that your property taxes aren't raised without any justification, because there isn't any, because they haven't come up with, and I've been asking for this, what are the figures, what are the figures of the increased revenue of the two areas that I talked about? Property taxes for people who have the same home still and are spending more of their income because they've received a raise? Why is that not covering the inflationary costs of government? And what is that cost? Where is it? Why is nobody coming up with that? Why is nobody advocating for the taxpayers? So I will not support raising taxes, because there has not been a case made to justify the increase. And we all should be voting unanimously against raising the property tax increases, because there is no justification, because we can't say how much extra revenue these people are already paying our taxpayers. Yet there are some people on this council who are more than willing to say, well, I just want to focus on the increased expenses. I don't want to try to quantify the increased revenues that aren't asking for any new services for Rapid City. I don't want to, I don't want to know that, because it exceeds, most likely, it far exceeds the expenses. And so I will not support it until we can make a case that the taxpayers will believe. And I can guarantee you, ladies and gentlemen, if this were referred to the ballot, are you really representing your constituents? Because what do you think the vote would be if this were referred to the ballot? Well, just remember the opt-out with the schools, whether they had a stronger case than we do or not, but we're telling them that we can build $180 million civic center expansion, but that we need to take $220,000 more in the next year in property taxes. But the thing that we're not honest about, some of us, is that times 10 years, that's more than $2.2 million from the taxpayers. In 20 years, how much is that? A lot of money. It's $4.4 million. And that's with, notwithstanding any other tax increases that will be made over the next 20 years. So I will not support a tax increase to the property tax owners and the citizens of Rapid City, especially those who rent, because it ends up costing them and their rent as well. We all know that. I yield.
Now we'll go to Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Kind of lost now. A question for Pauline Sumption, if I could, please.
Go ahead.
Pauline, what's the projected sales tax revenue number you're using for the budget? Is it 3% or is it 2%?
For 2016, it's at 3%.
How much should we come in, to this point, at 2015? What are we coming in at?
I believe it's like 3.46.
Historically, what are we usually about?
Depends on how far back you go.
Last five years.
We're roughly around four on average, but we've seen dips, we've seen more, we've seen less.
Okay. I guess, just for clarification, the Civic Center is not funded out of property taxes. Once again, folks, Civic Center is not funded by property taxes. Expansion was not funded by property taxes. It's all sales tax revenue, and it's generally self-sustaining, other than, but the bid tax, so, but the bed and board tax. Anyway, getting back to the point at hand here, I'm just a little concerned with voting to raise the property tax at this point, because our constituents have, because of the confusion of the Civic Center and the sales tax area, we've got a new one coming forward again within, pretty soon, hopefully. I don't want to feel like, have them exhausted with all these taxes keep throwing at them and perceived raises that they think that, you know, we're just trying to milk them for everything we can. I was a big supporter of the opt-out, because I really, truly support education, and I support, I see the need, and I absolutely would support that again. If it was a public vote, I would definitely vote for it again. Sitting up here, and I definitely see the argument for the CPI, I definitely see the reason the cost of everything does go up. I think we've got a little bit of exhaustion with the taxpayers at this point, where they're just, for whatever reason, they're tired of seeing this come up on their news feeds, and they keep thinking that we're just trying to tax them out of their homes, and that's really not the case. I mean, there is legitimate arguments for all, both sides here. One thing I see is we collect, you know, $7.5 million reserves that we require to keep, and we can't tap those for any reason other than emergencies, but then we have another $2 million in undesignated cash, which historically, what do we spend on that? About $1 million a year, roughly? Pauline, sorry. Can I go back? It's okay?
It honestly depends on the economy and how our other revenue projections come in. I've seen where we've spent about $4 million in a year.
Okay. All right. So I'm just, I'm just trying to figure out, we collect all this money, and it's, you know, everybody tries to earmark money for one way or the other, but it's, as my esteemed colleague, Mrs. Scott, has pointed out, you know, your money's your money. You don't, it doesn't really have to go one way, any one specific place, it just goes to the general fund, so to speak. And I just have a hard time raising your taxes when we're collecting extra cash that we haven't got designated for anything at this point, so, and I just don't want to, at the risk of wearing out the public with all these new taxes, just, and I'm about to get punched here, but I don't know what to do. I'm really on the fence about this, and I'm not trying to weasel out of it, I can see both sides of it really clearly. We definitely need to, you know, fund the tires, as Mr. Wright points out, you need tires on your cars. But where do, I'm sorry, someone's just got to give me a better argument than I'm listening to right now. Thanks.
Okay. Pauline, do you still need to speak? Pauline Sumption, finance officer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just to address Alderman Laurenti, a couple of things. Theoretically, if our tax requests were the same every year, and your property valuation continued to go up, your mill levy should be going down to offset that. So there should not be additional revenue or very minimal revenue coming from a normal taxpayer on any given year if we don't request any of our increases. As far as valuations have increased over the years, yes, they have, and you'll recognize that when you sell your home. But to address the part where they haven't asked for any new services, right now, we're not asking for CPI to address new services. That's why even when council members or the letter in the Rapid City Journal from the editorial board where it says, we need to specify what the CPI money's going to be used for, we don't want new programs. We don't want the CPI to fund new services. We want to maintain the current services at the current levels that we are providing those services. We have, and I've said this before, and I know I sound like a broken record, but we have been continuing to do the same and sometimes more with less resources. At some point, there will be a breaking, a breaking point, and we will not be able to do that anymore. Is that this year? I don't know. I don't have a crystal ball. But I do know, if we do continue to spend the undesignated cash to balance our budgets, because we don't want to worry about taking the CPI, we will run out of undesignated money. Undesignated money is one-time money. It is not It is not for ongoing expenses. And so looking at the budget today, just the general fund, because that's where our, our focus is, I looked at every single object line to see what, where have the large increases come other than salaries and wages? Because we know those are negotiated salaries, we've already approved the additional FTEs, that type of thing. Highest work comp as a whole in the general fund, up 33.3%. Some of that has to do with the new positions, and some of it has to do with the increased raises. But a lot of it has to do with the increased rates that we're receiving from our third-party administrators and our stop-loss provider. That 33%, $322,000. Health insurance. The recommendation from the health insurance committee is to increase our, our rates, our premium rates, 5% a year. We haven't raised them in five years, at least. So that amount, $296,000, and I'm rounding up, just so you know. Chemical supplies, 22.2% increase, $168,000. Most of that's for snow removal, for the salt and sand mixtures for the roads. Electricity, 10.3%, $182,569. And then there are some minor equipment purchases and capital outlay, and then the Black Hills Vision that you guys added. Those alone add up to over $300,000, those three items. And those are one-time monies. And we increased how much we are balancing the budget with our undesignated cash to some extent as well, that, in that $3 million number that we have. Those seven object codes out of many, many more object codes in total, total almost $1.3 million in seven object codes, not including salaries and wages. So outside of those three, the other is just cost of doing business increasing. So tell me how the $224,000 is even covering our increased costs? So I, I'm talking about the CPI. This is why I feel, as the finance officer, that this is justified in taking. This has to do with the motion on the, on the floor. This is needed for our budget. And as I said at Legal and Finance, if you do not take the 224, you need to go back and figure out cuts, or you need to direct the mayor to, or request the mayor to go back and make the cuts, because there is no more anywhere else. Thank you.
Now we'll go to Jerry Wright. You have four minutes.
Thank you, and I will be as brief as possible. I know that we had, I believe, a $2 million reduction in budgets that had to be taken before this even came to us. We know that we are in dire straits for money to fix our streets, and on and on, and we've seen increased costs of X percent for a lot of our products from ice and salt and sand. The biggest problem we have is the, our income for the city is based on somewhat of an antiquated structure for income, and that is property tax. It's about a fourth of our, to a third of our general fund revenue. We really can't force or make decisions on sales tax, but if it's a part of our income which balances our budget, then to be responsible to our taxpayers, we have to, in order to maintain the quality of our city and services, we need to make that adjustment. If we choose not to do that, then we have to make the choice of reducing the budgets in those items that are funded with that money. The other money is spoken for throughout the budget. If we take it from savings or some other place, we're just buying time. And that's, that's not right. We need some, we need some tax reform in this, in this state. And I, I will support this because I think it's the only thing we can do to be responsible across the board to our taxpayers. And that's it. Thank you. Don't like it, but I think we need to do it.
Thank you. Now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I'll probably chew up all my entire five minutes here on this.
Don't have to.
And I'm going to be voting no on this motion is to deny taking the CPI. In other words, I'm supporting the CPI. A mentor and a friend of mine, a former council member, Gary Brown, was asking the question, what, when do we, as a city, get beyond the no more taxes part of it? And I want to add my voice to that same question is because I could not disagree more with the arguments of not taking the CPI. One question that keeps reoccurring is the justification of the increase. I would just like to say, just take a look around the city. Just take a look around the city, and even if you want to, take a look at City Hall. But around the city, just look at all of our streets. They're crumbling. And taking, it takes, right now, two centuries to get it back to a street that we just built. I'm glad to see the pothole crew that's out there is still being active, and the pothole truck is still working, the streets of Rapid City, the crews and contractors are doing what they can to chip seal, crack seal, and overlay, but is that enough? In my ward, there are streets that could qualify for the rough road test. I ask you to just take a look at this building here at City Hall. The main floor is showing signs of failure with heaving and cracking. What of the other buildings that are showing signs of need for attention, like the main fire station? Our employees are working out of converted, out of converted closets and storage areas. The wastewater treatment plant and the water treatment plants have their own casualty lists. My neighbors are getting flooded, and neighbors in the Roosevelt Park area are getting stormwater into their houses. To pay for those bills and balance the budget, we've been using undesignated cash for ongoing expenses. This is the philosophy of putting our bills on a credit card, and I hope we can pay that bill. I think in time, we need to reexamine that credit card bill. $224,340 is a lot of money, and agree with the comment that in 10 years, that will be over $2.3 million. I say fix the streets with that money, not take the money from those line items to pay for the gas, electric, fuel, and tire bills from another line item. When the mayor, council, and departments receive phone calls from the public, a majority of those calls are not for give-back. It's of call for service. Safe, affordable housing is another area of interest for me. The council is criticized for making the cost go up on affordable housing. Two items come up right away for me that is in the, that is with the current process, that the city will not allow developers to put in traditional affordable housing because it just doesn't pencil out for them right now. In addition, nonprofits that work on safe, affordable housing have not called me or emailed me with the concern for the CPI. These are just a few of the reasons that I am supporting the Consumer Price Index, and there are others. I just don't want to go down the same road as the school district, who are, for me, are the canary in the coal mine for the city of Rapid City.
I'll yield the floor. Thank you. Now we'll go to Ron Wyffenbach. You have a minute and 15 seconds, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate that. Are you going to have one of the staff correct those inaccuracies for us, please?
Which inaccuracies?
Ones that just were spouted. Thanks, anyway. But we'll move on to the next thought here. We want to talk about wages and salaries and the median income, and I've told people in here, the median income in Rapid City, $41,000, $42,000 a year for a family of four people, with most people in that household working two and three jobs. So my question, Mr. Mayor, is what is the average salary of an employee of the Rapid City? Does anybody have that for us? The same thing, then we go on with the same things that are faced, our constituents face the same issues with the rising cost of gasoline, the rising cost of electricity, the rising costs of whatever, whatever it is. They don't, they don't get any breaks, they don't, somebody coming to them, giving them a raise. Rapid City's wages are notoriously low, for whatever reason that may be, and politically you can argue it any way you want. We have a, we have a huge population of people who are under the poverty line. This affects them more drastically than anybody else. So when people make comments about $10 or whatever, put it into perspective, because it's 25% more if you rent a house.
Time.
What do we mean?
Five minutes.
I've only talked one time.
You talked the first time for three minutes and 45 seconds.
I thought it was five minutes each time.
No. That's why I explained that in the beginning. Your council rules are weird. It's five minutes total per topic.
No, it's five minutes per time. Each person gets twice.
Negative.
I mean, if I can't talk for my constituents, I'd, I mean, if we, if we're going to suspend the rules, we should suspend them at the very beginning, then or change them at the very beginning. I didn't understand. I thought each person.
Not suspending the rule, that's the rule. I'm just letting you, that's why I explained it.
So I'm going to get it cut off, and I'm going to listen to that information that's inaccurate, and have, have our staff correct someone else who's making information. Now I'm trying to correct someone with that information, and I'm going to get cut off. That's fine. If the rest of the council agrees with that, fine. Chad, I appreciate your, your vote on this.
Next, we'll go to Darla Drew.
I just have a couple of questions, and I think they'd go to Pauline. So the, as I understand it, since I'm a newer council member, the CPI was always part of the budget until about six years ago. Is that correct? No?
Well, it was about 2009, 2010 that it, it changed where it was not included in the mayor's budget, but yet he would say, "This is a dollar amount, and this is what I think you should use it for." And so there, then the discussion was had on that.
Okay. And so if we go forward with this ordinance, if we, I'm going to say approve the CPI, does that come back always in the budget, then? Is that what we're saying, that it will always come back in the budget with not a discussion?
No, this is just for this year.
Okay.
This year only.
All right. Well, I'm inclined to support our finance officer and the recommendations of a, of a budget that's already been created, and that we really have to look at it as something that people want to see, at least I want to see it go forward as it's been projected for the next year. And I think really, overall, it will be a tax savings. I know that sounds really like opposite of everybody else, you know, that's against this. But if we just kick the can down the road, we're going to be asking people for a larger tax increase in the future. We're setting up councils in the future to go with taxes that are higher. That's, that's what I really feel, you know? I mean, peanut gallery. So just know that there are people that think that this is the way this should go right now to save our taxpayers' problems in the future. I yield.
Okay. Thank you. Now we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor. And I find it very interesting that we started these new rules up on something that is very dear to the mayor. So I find that quite interesting. In my ward, a lot of people live at or below the poverty line. Every dollar counts. Every dollar counts. What most people don't realize is, and can I have, ask the finance officer a real quick question?
Go ahead.
Pauline, what was the actual percentage on the total budget that this budget was over last year's budget?
It was about 6%, I believe.
And what was the percent of our revenues over last year, roughly? Do you know that we increased?
Sorry. It's 3.4% for operating revenue was the increased budget.
And that was for revenues?
That was for revenues.
So we're actually spending a percent and a half above our revenues? Is that what you're telling me?
Correct, because the largest increase would be about a $600,000 increase in undesignated fund balance, which is not considered operating revenue, so.
Thank you, Pauline. And the reason I ask that is, I just wanted to compare that to the majority of my constituents, and I think, you know, a lot of the people of Rapid City. Typically, the average working person may get 2% or 3% increase in a year in their salary. And groceries go up, and gas goes up, and rent goes up, and taxes go up, and everything goes up. But we have to budget to that 2% or 3%. So I guess I'm kind of interested in why we didn't budget this for 3% this year instead of 6%. So maybe you can answer that question, Pauline, real quick?
I need to clarify something before, I want to make sure I understand correctly. Are you talking the budget as a whole, all funds, enterprise, capital improvement funds, or are you talking just general fund?
Yes.
Because I don't, I don't have the percentage on revenues for all the funds. I just have the general fund.
Okay.
And so the general fund, I show 3.4%, and I show a total budget of 4.06%.
But we do have, we have revenue funds that generate a lot more.
We do.
Percentage-wise, I know that.
And a lot of grant money, especially like with the airport. So where they have a very large capital improvement expense increase, they also have grant revenue to cover that.
I guess what I'm trying to make, the point I'm trying to make here is, is the average working person out there, including me, the way we have to budget our household is according to the money that we're going to have come in. So I think that, I really have a hard time believing that we need to take $240,000 this bad that we can't find it somewhere to cut when we've already increased this budget 6%. So thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And to, to clarify, Mr. Roberts, I think I know the answer to your question, and the 6% increase in the overall budget was about the same dollar value of all of the brand-new improvements out at the airport, which were funded either by grants or revenue generated by the airport. Prior to this, prior to these budget hearings, $2 million were trimmed out of the...
So then the, the PD didn't have an 8.5% increase? Parks and Rec, on an average, didn't have a 9% increase? I'm just, all of this came out of, there wasn't departments that had pretty big increases in their budgets last year? I think, all that I'm trying to say is, there's places that we can cut money. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Pauline, do you need to clarify something?
It's not clarification. I just want to answer Alderman Wyffenbach's question about the average salary of employees. This is based on those employees that were here January 1, when I got the original information from Mary Allison and payroll. Average employee wage is $49,900 a year.
Good. Now on Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I first want to start off, I, you know, I respect everybody's opinion here, and I, you know, I don't think any of us are going to change anybody's mind here. But I just, I find it interesting that, you know, and the guys that are impassioned, that don't want to take the CPI, I respect that, you know? And if, if you're representing your constituents and that's the way you feel, that's great. But, but we just went through four long budget hearings where nobody was, was denied an opportunity to talk. We, you know, I hear people talk about priorities and stuff. Everybody, you know, we could have, if, if this is what you wanted to get rid of, we could have rolled up our sleeves, and we should come up in our budget hearings with, with reductions in the budget so that this wouldn't have to be such a hot deal. You know? But we knew the number. You know, and if I, if I leave here tonight, because I'm, I'm going to vote no on that, I'm going to support, if I leave here tonight as a, with a tax-and-spend reputation, I just want to leave one thing clear. Tonight it was said, we voted to spend $180 million on the civic center. I didn't. Seven people up here did. And that was, that's $11,500,000 a year for 30 years. This is a one-time, this is $224,000. So if I'm the tax-and-spender up here, I can live with it. You know, and I, I look at the, I look at the other, you know, I, and I understand, I believe, what, what Alderman Laurenti's talking about, there's, you know, if everybody's getting a raise, there's more money out there. But I, I can tell you, in my business world, and where I got to sign the fronts of checks, my costs are going up in, in significant areas where sales tax isn't collected. Insurance, utilities, work comp, cost of vehicles, you pay your 3% statement, but there's not sales tax, you know? I, I'm going to support, you know, I, it may not be a popular thing, and like I say, I, I hope you guys respect my opinion as much as I respect yours. as much as I respect yours, and I yield.
Amanda Scott, we have a couple of people in the queue that have already spoken twice, and they're gonna need the council's permission to speak a third time. Meanwhile, I'll go to Amanda Scott, 'cause I only have you down as once.
Thank you, Mayor. Call the question.
Question's been called. Is there any objection to calling the question? Okay, one object. Now what? Okay, let's take a vote on calling the question. All in favor of calling the question signify by saying aye? Opposed? Two noes by Lewis and Laurenti. Motion passes. So, now we proceed to the vote on item number 41, resolution of intent to take the statutory authorized increase in property tax. And the motion on the floor is to deny. So, an affirmative vote will deny the CPI. A negative vote will approve the CPI. And Heidi, let's go straight to roll call.
Lewis? Drew? Roberts? Nordstrom? Scott? Laurenti? Wright? Wifenbach? Doyle? Estes? The motion fails?
Okay, the motion to deny fails.
Six to four.
Six to four. Okay, thank you. Now, on to item number 42, the second reading, ordinance number 6069, fiscal year 2016 appropriation ordinance. Moved to approve by Estes, second by Richie. I'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. On item number 42, is that the correct one that we're on?
Correct.
Just wanted to double-check. Thank you. I'd like to make a substitute or an amendment to this motion to include removing the council members' raises. If I can retain the floor?
Pardon?
May I retain the floor?
Okay, substitute motion to...
Amendment.
Amendment to remove the council raises for about $3,000. Is there a second? Laurenti is the second, and then Amanda wants to retain the floor. Go ahead.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll keep this very, very brief. As we discussed during the budget hearings, I appreciate what the mayor was intending to do by putting in the $430 per council member, which comes to a total of $4,300 totally to be removed from the budget if this amendment to this motion passes. I believe that this is a larger issue at hand. Basically, what we need to decide as a city council member or membership is, is serving as a city council representative a job or giving back to the community? If it's giving back to the community, which is the way I ran in my campaign and what I view this as, serving, because when I ran, I didn't even know there was any compensation. And basically, what I was told after I won the campaign is that this is a compensation to cover the expenses for city council members as they have to go about visiting constituents and going to meetings and checking out the different issues that come before us. And I'm okay with that. That's the way I ran to serve on city council. I see it, and I said it in my campaign speeches at that time, is that I felt that I had enough experience that I felt I could at least give back to the community with some of the knowledge I had. I can understand the other city council members that are for raising the city council's compensation, and that is they're trying to encourage more people to run for city council. And I understand that aspect. But if that's the way we're gonna look at that, then I think this position needs to be looked at more like a job. And I will tell you, the compensation that city council members get now, we are like back in the 1980s for an hourly rate of about $2.35 an hour. So, if we're gonna look at this as a job, then I think the whole wages needs to be refigured in order to attract more people to serve on city council. So, just wanted to clarify why I'm making the motion now. I think it is a larger discussion that probably needs to be had for clarification as far as what this position, serving on city council, who we're trying to attract, if we're trying to attract more people to serve on city council, and whether it really should be treated as a job or if it should be seen as a community service, which is giving back to the community, and therefore, you should only be compensated. And thank you for your indulgence, Mayor. I know we don't see eye-to-eye on this one, but I am gonna make the motion. Thank you.
Okay, now, we'll go to Brad Estes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and thank you, Amanda. I thought during the budget hearings, we took this out. Did we not? Oh, I apologize. I thought we did. Okay. I guess I'm with Amanda. I appreciate it, Mayor. And I guess if we could keep it and we could donate it back or take it out, I'll sure support supporting this budget without our raises, but I'll yield. Thanks.
Okay, Steve Laurenti?
Thank you, Mayor, and I obviously seconded it, so I will be supporting removing the raise. And I, too, along with Alderman Scott, believe that, at least in my opinion, that this is a service. However, I do believe it is a low-paying job, technically. We all know that coming in, so I don't know that, you know, I'm not going to complain here. I know what this job entails. I had a good feel for it when I came in. I ran for reelection after my first term, so I'm not in any position to complain about the pay. And I don't believe that the amount, I think it was around $6,000 for all of the council, is going to make a significant difference in the quality, if that's an argument. The fact, I believe, the quality of the council's very high, is very good. It's people who are very dedicated to serving their ward, and they're advocating for their ward. So, I don't believe that the increase makes a difference except for the fact that we're asking for more money from the taxpayers, which is why I won't support it. It's a very small amount, but imagine $6,000 in one household in one of your wards. It's very significant. And so, I'm hoping that my colleagues will support this. The fact of the matter is, this cut is exactly how we would have avoided taking a property tax increase. But there are some of my colleagues who are not willing to roll up their sleeves tonight and do that. But I believe we could easily find $220,000 to save from that property tax. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you. Jerry Wright?
I'm gonna call it budgeting for reelection. I think that unfortunately, the payer scale of the council is set by the council. And reality is, and we need to look out in the future. And unfortunately, I wish there was a magical body that could vote our raises or decreases or whatever. That doesn't exist. It's us. And I think that by raising the level of compensation, it's going to make it a little easier for elections in the future for people to make that decision. Fortunately, I'm independently wealthy and retired, so it doesn't matter to me, okay? But I know that years ago, I was in the construction business, and I served three years on a board, and I lost a lot of money because I had to come in and do my service. And I'm really concerned that if we don't look at this as a means of compensating our people that are willing to come out of their private business, whether they're employed by somebody or in their own business, that there's a chance they'll recover some of the income that they gave up. And $1,000 a month isn't much. And I know that all of you spend way more than two hours a month or four hours a month. You spend a lot of time. And think about the people in the future that are gonna consider running for these offices, and we want them to give it a serious thought and realize that it is a service. It is a service, but there is a little compensation because they are going to spend money of their own. They're gonna spend their time, and they are gonna be working at minimum wage. It's only fair, and we're really not gonna benefit from it. And it's not...I think we just need...we have the obligation to look out for the future. So, I will not support the minimum to the budget. I support the raise. And I'll give my money back if I don't need to prove that, the raise, not all of it, but I'll give the raise back.
Okay, thank you. Ron Wifenbach?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Don't start that clock till I talk. I would agree with Mr. Estes earlier that I think...I thought we had took this off the table. So, I really hadn't become prepared tonight to talk on it, but I understand. I don't think this is...council pay has increased since I left the council. And you guys are all here, so maybe you guys all need raises. I'm not sure what got you to come here, but I don't know what we're trying to accomplish with it. And I understand the thought process on some of it, you know, looking out for the future councils or whatever. I mean, it's been an automatic form of government for...since 1957. So, I think it's the best government we have. Whether we agree with each other or not, I think the spirit of debate is what is at the heart of good governance. The only heart of this good governance is spirit of debate. Does it cost you a lot of money to sit up here? Yes. It cost me a lot of money to sit up here, but I do it because it comes from my heart. And I think most of you do the same. And I appreciate the thought process of the financial situations. I'm just not sure that I'm in need of it. So, and I voted tonight against the CPI. So, and I...like I talked earlier, this is where you get into that conundrum. It's like, do you vote for the budget because you don't like parts of it? I'm gonna support the budget tonight because I do support the council's decisions. I supported your decision when you guys voted to spend 350 million dollars of taxpayer revenue. I'll support this decision tonight also. That's the way it is. But the one thing I don't appreciate is the opportunity not to speak my piece, understanding one way and then having something else change midstream. I don't appreciate that. I think that I had something to say for my constituents that call me up every day, talk to me every day. I think I...and I spent a lot of time to come up here to talk my piece. So, and I do disagree with several people on this budget, on several items. I believe there's plenty of room here. I don't think it's in the position for people to give their opinions. I think it's all...needs to be factual information that's given. That's why when I asked earlier about the average wage, average employee wage, I was told tonight was $49,000. That's for one person. When I told you the median income, I told you what it is for a family of four in the city of Rapid City. That's the entire family working, not just one person. So, let's keep that in mind. We talked about health insurance. This is a self-supported health insurance. If the premiums haven't been raised on the employees, if we're gonna talk about that part of it, then we need to look at it. I don't know what kind of surpluses are in there, what's not in there, whatever. I'm just saying, there's lots of opportunity to look at it. We defunded the one and only option that we thought would work, to look for opportunities, and we defunded it this year. So, with that being said, I'm not sure exactly where we're gonna go. Pay our council members more money? To do what? Spend more money? Or get to work? Take care of your constituents in your areas. Look for opportunities. Take charge. Hold people accountable and responsible. $120,000, $130,000 from two mistakes in the last month. That's more than half of what we just taxed the taxpayers for. I haven't seen any accountability or responsibility for that. But on the other hand, I gotta say, I do believe the mayor is gonna get control of that. I do believe that. Earnestly in my heart, I believe that. I wanna give him that benefit of the doubt. But until we start doing those things, call me whatever you want, tax and spend, not tax and spend, but if you disagree with me, at least respect my position and my opinion and give me the chance to be heard out. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor, and I thank you for bringing this item up in the original budget proposal. And however, I'm gonna support Alderman Scott's position to not take the salary increase for the council members. And I just...there's just a little bit of history for me is that when I was an employee of the city, I had the opportunity to be here for one of the meetings, and that was the meeting that the council took a 3% budget cut in their salaries at that time. And so, the salaries have not been increased in five or six years approximately. And I just wanna caution the rest of the council that in the future that I... This is...this isn't leaning to...but it is, for me, leaning towards incumbent protection. And I just wanna caution the council that I firmly believe that's what it's doing because I've had...a few people have mentioned to me, not that great a number of people are telling me they wanna get on the city council anyway. But what they're telling me is that they can't afford to be involved with the city council because they...because of what the salary position is. So, Mayor, if you do actually come forward with a proposal on changing the term limits, then maybe that would be the better opportunity to come forward with a different package at that time to take a look at what the salary structure should be then, and then we can incorporate it into the budget. But at this time, I'm gonna be supporting Alderman Scott's position. Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to John Roberts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and I wanna thank Amanda Scott for bringing this forward. You know, there was a few of us that were thinking it was taken out, and now I remember thinking that, that there was a change in there, and it wasn't. So, I do appreciate that. I think that there's not anyone on this council that's doing this job for the money. I think we do it because we have a heart to do it. I think we do it because we care about the people in our wards, and we care about the people of Rapid City. There are people, myself included, when I first got on the council, it was very difficult financially for me trying to juggle working at that time for the county and having to take paid leave, having to, you know, do a lot of different things just so I could go to meetings, just so I could, you know... Now, luckily, I work for myself, and I'm probably losing a lot more money. But I don't care. I have a heart for this. I have a passion for this. I love the people of Rapid City, the people of North Rapid. And I don't think that we can ask our constituents for more money for ourselves when we're increasing your taxes when we really don't need to. So, thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll go to Chad Lewis.
I think, Mr. Mayor, I didn't wanna be the only person that's not in the paper with saying I don't want the extra money, so...that's Lewis, L-E-W-I-S. In all honesty, you know, the fact of the matter is, is I appreciate the mayor's effort to try to make this, you know, to compensate us a little more. And once again, agreeing with everybody else up here, it is really...it's... $400 bucks a year is really not gonna make a difference whether or not I run for reelection or don't. It's got a lot more issues that would, you know, consider before I do that anyway. But if you wanna get serious about it, we shouldn't be have one representative from each ward and two at large, make it $50,000 a year and make it a semi-full-time job. Then maybe we could get some people up here, you know, that would attract a lot more people. Probably a little better quality, to be honest with you. But anyway, the fact of the matter is, I appreciate Amanda Scott putting that up here, and I will be voting to remove it as well. Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for the thought, though. It does count, much like the cards I send.
Thank you for that. And now, I'll go to Amanda Scott, and Amanda, you have a minute and 15 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor, but just wanna clarify, because I was gonna make a motion to call the question on the amendment, but has Darla Drew already spoke? 'Cause I believe she had not, so I would be after her in the queue.
Okay, thanks for that. Darla Drew?
Thank you, Mayor. I also will not be voting for an increase in our stipends or whatever you wanna call it. However, after serving the year, it's been an education. I thought I could definitely be up to speed. I would be able to juggle all the things that happened. You know, that I...I'd had a lot of different jobs. This just wouldn't be that tough. And I was wrong. This is a tough job, you know? And you can't... This is a tough job, you know, and you can't pay somebody enough, I think, to do it. They have to want to do this out of their heart, out of their concern for the city, or a real opinion that they need to have represented. So from my opinion, we have great people on this council. They're not just good people, they're great people. They give a lot of time to this city. There's no way that you can measure what they really do or even put a monetary value on it, because they're at meetings, I'm at meetings, every day, all day. I mean, not all day, but you know, at least one meeting a day for the city, and maybe three or four. So it's, it's a huge job, and you have to have a real compassion, real feeling for this city to be able to sit up here and listen to some of the diatribes against decisions made. And also to do the best to serve your constituency and look for the best for the future of Rapid City. But I will not be voting for a raise to the people that are sitting on the dais, because I really don't think it's something that they expect or are looking for.
Thank you. Now back to Amanda Scott, a minute and 15 seconds.
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to call the question on the amendment to the item number 42.
Okay. Any objection, call in a question? Okay. Joel, just to clarify, I believe the motion is to approve the budget with the amendment? Heidi? Is that your motion, Amanda?
I believe the first thing is to approve whether the amendment is going to be accepted, and then we take a vote on approving the budget.
Okay. We'll do it that way. All those in favor of approving the amendment, say aye. Opposed? One from Jerry Wright. Yeah, we got that part. Okay, now for the item number 42, the second reading of the appropriation ordinance. Motion by Lewis, second by Estes. Any discussion? Seeing no discussion, all those in favor of item 42 signify by saying aye. Opposed? John Roberts and Amanda Scott? And Laurenti? Three noes. Okay, motion passes. Continue on with the ordinances, and we'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Item number 43 is the first reading of ordinance 6071 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by the city of Rapid City for a rezoning from no-use district to low-density residential one district for property generally described as being located at 3,400 North Elk Vale Road. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Richie Nordstrom. All those in favor of the items, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 44, first reading ordinance number 6072 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of the chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by Donna J. Lippert for a rezoning from general commercial district to medium residential district for property generally described as being located at 727 Franklin Street. I make a motion to approve.
Second. Second by Richie Nordstrom. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Item number 45, first reading ordinance number 6073 and ordinance amending section 17.06 of chapter 17 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. Rezoning the within-described property is requested by Renner and Associates, LLC for a rezoning from general commercial district to office commercial district for property generally described as being located at 1240 East Minnesota Street. I make a motion to approve.
Second by Charity Doyle. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. This takes us on to Community Planning and Development Services Department items. Number 46 is a request by Dream Design International, Inc. for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at south of Marlin Drive between Creek Drive and East Minnesota Street. Recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Move by Scott, second by Drew. All those in favor, say aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number 47, a request by Renner and Associates, LLC for Joseph L. Theburg for a preliminary subdivision plan for property generally described as being located at 8105 West Highway 44. The recommendation is to approve with stipulations. Move by Scott, second by Estes. All those in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Down on to council items and liaison reports. Number 48, motion for delivery of items from committee, second reading ordinance number 6070 and ordinance reclassifying the executive assistant program coordinator within the mayor's office, so the position is no longer an officer of the city by repealing section 212070 of the Rapid City Municipal Code. And the recommendation from me is to deliver this item to the full council for consideration at the next council meeting. Move by Lewis, second by Scott. Go to Jerry Wright.
Just to clarify, this is a competitive job. Someone has to, you take applications, you interview, and you select the best employee. These are not, this is not an appointed job, correct?
That's correct. It's a competitive job process, and in addition to this, the ordinance also covers who that person will work for, designate that person to work for the council.
And therefore is not an officer of the city, but a regular competitive, thank you. That answers, I think, the questions that Kurt had. Thank you.
Steve Laurenti.
Thank you, Mayor. And if I could have the attorney's office please clarify, because this was tabled at Legal and Finance, so I assume we're smoking this out now at this point. Can you explain the process, Joel, so that we're all clear on it?
If tonight the council affirms smoking it out of committee, then at your next meeting, it'll be delivered to the council from the committee. So basically, you're not actually voting on the ordinance tonight. You are voting to compel the committee to produce the ordinance to you so that the entire council has the ability to debate its merits and vote on it.
So Joel, one more question then. If it goes back to Legal and Finance, if this is passed, smoking it out, does Legal and Finance, does not Legal Finance have the ability to table it once again?
No.
Why is that?
Because that is the rule. If you could just table it again, then there would be no way to ever order its delivery. The entire council, if you vote it tonight, the council is telling the committee you must deliver it.
Okay. Thank you. And I just want to go on to say, this is germane to the particular issue, because as we had a speaker here tonight talk on this particular motion, I will not support the motion tonight or at the next Legal and Finance meeting, because I just want my colleagues to understand the history here. We voted unanimously as a council in 2011 to make this an officer position. The pay grade is being reduced regardless of this particular motion. The pay grade, I believe, might already be in place, if I'm correct. So just understand that that's already going to be in place if this is defeated. The reason that we should make sure that this position stays as an officer is kind of what the speaker was saying earlier tonight, is that there isn't a, an appointment by the mayor and consent and advice from the council. Why would we give up something unanimously that we had passed before? Why would we give up that power? And if I, if you, we will remember the debate, and there wasn't a lot of debate, but some of the reasons that I supported it was because of the fact that there were accusations, whether they were real or perceived, that these positions were just given sort of a cronyism or nepotism thing with previous administrations. And not just with this particular mayor, the new one, but we have to think about all of the mayors and the council going forward. So whether this mayor wants to appoint somebody from his campaign, his election group, doesn't matter. The fact of the matter is, we need to make sure that we retain this power, because the fact of the matter is, the taxpayers are paying for this position, and we voted unanimously to make this an officer position for that very reason. And so this is part of continuing to have open, accountable government to the people. If every mayor going forward has the ability to appoint whoever they want, and we know, some of us know the history, there were previous mayors who did appoint people that were from their campaigns, that were relationships of people who worked for their campaigns. So we need to make sure that this stays above, above the waterline for the taxpayers, and that there, there's an accountability here, and I do not believe that we should give up this accountability. I yield.
Okay, now we'll go to Richie Nordstrom.
Thank you, Mayor. Are we voting, are we debating on the motion to smoke it out, or are we debating on the ordinance itself?
You're debating only on whether to send it to the next council meeting for consideration.
Okay. I just wanted to be clear, because I was hearing the justification for the ordinance, so thank you for the clarification. I'm, there was a little confusion at Legal and Finance, and I apologize for not being clear on my part of it, because I did vote no at that point, so we need to correct the minutes at that time. And so I just wanted to make sure that I'm going on record in supporting what the mayor is suggesting here, is that, that we take this off the table and bring it back to the next Legal and Finance. Then I can give my rationale then at that point for why I support the ordinance.
Okay. For clarification, Joel, it's, is this, is this or is it not going to the next Legal Finance? Or will it go straight to the next council meeting?
No, it will be, the, the Legal and Finance Committee will be required to take it off the table. The Legal and Finance Committee should make a recommendation, either approve, deny, or I suppose they could send it without a recommendation, but they will need to take action on it and send it to the council at the next meeting. So it will be on the next Legal and Fin. If you proved, if you approve the item tonight that it be delivered, then it will be discussed and on the agenda of the Legal and Finance Committee, and they will be required to deliver it to you.
Okay. Thank you. Now John Roberts.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor, and I really appreciate what you said, Steve. But I do want to clarify you a little bit about what you said there. You said that this gives us power. This really doesn't give us power. It gives the people of Rapid City power to be able to see who is going into this position, and if they have any objections, they can bring it to us on the city council. And I do understand why things that are put into ordinance form, put into documents for accountability, get taken out, because it is a lot easier to circumvent the people and not have to worry about what they may or may not say. But I do hope that this council will look at this, because we can change the pay grade, we can change whatever this position is going to do now, and we don't have to change what we put into effect, so the people have the right to see who's going in this position. Thank you.
Okay. Chad Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, just a little history for people out there in TV land, if you're still awake. Kate Ripentrop had this job for 42 years. Think back to the Johnson administrations, the year before I was born. And she survived Johnson, Nixon, Ford, Carter, Reagan twice, Bush won, Clinton twice, and George W. Bush twice. So so much for political cronyism and payback, because she managed to go through all, all those administrations, and all the mayors in between there, and she was the main person there for all those years. Then she retired in 2007, and then, I don't know, there's accusations about whatever. The fact of the matter is, Mayor Hanks hired somebody new, who by all, I mean, all reports was completely competent in the job. Mayor Quaker moved into the job, and he didn't want to keep that person, so he was able to hire who he wanted. Good. That's part of the benefit. I mean, you've got to be comfortable as a mayor with your staff. You can't have someone looking over your shoulder, or it's someone that probably knows more about you than your spouse in some cases. So I have no problem with a mayor being able to hire whoever it is, and I don't care if it's this mayor, the next mayor, three mayors down the road. That's the person that works for them. That's, that's their executive assistant, that's the person that schedules all their stuff. We're making, I mean, as my opinion, as the way it currently stands, is more of a political pony show than anything. I mean, I think you're making way more political by having this ordinance, because I was on the board that hired the last person who was in the position, who by the way, was a great person and did a good job from my perspective. But the mayor hired whoever he wanted to hire anyway. We just all kind of broke it down to the person, and he chose amongst all the candidates, but it was pretty obvious who was going to get hired. And I have no problem with that. He should have been able to hire who he wanted to. That's the way the world works, folks, and you've got to be comfortable. Not every single position in the city has to be, where are we going to draw the line? Now, from now on, we're going to have a, for the secretary to the director of whatever department's going to have to be going through the same show? It's ridiculous. This is purely how you hire, people get hired all day long. Most people in this world get their jobs because they know somebody that was working there. That's how you've got your job to start with, at least with some job along the way. I got hired at a movie company because my friend's dad owned it. Should I have, I mean, you know, and I did a good job, and I kept my job because I did a good job. It's just that, I don't understand why we're making this political. It's ridiculous. You should have a job that, you should have the right to hire whoever you want to, if you're in that position, and you are still going to be, you're going to be held accountable for the actions of that person, guaranteed, especially when you're in a political position like the mayor's office. So I think I have no problem with the mayor making that job. I trust him with the city. I trusted him with the police force before that, and I'm going to trust him to make the right decision to hire his own secretary. Thank you.
Okay. Ron Wyfenbach.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think the rules apply only to me tonight. Evidently. But I can handle smoking it out. I think that's fair to give everybody a chance to speak their piece. I had to smoke out an item, and everybody gave me a chance, so I, I feel turnaround's a good play to smoke it out and let everybody vet it. And, you know, you know, just, just respect other people's opinions, please. My gosh, we're talking about smoking this out, we're not talking about approving it or not approving it, so. I only used 31 seconds.
Excellent. Excellent. Good job. Jerry Wright. Let's try to keep it to the, to the item on the agenda.
Could you explain to the council what a competitive hire job is? It's not an appointment, correct? What is the process?
No, absolutely not. We post a position on our website for sure. Sometimes we advertise, you know, it depends on the position, how far we want to reach. If we want to reach regionally, nationally, you know, it would depend. So we'll promote and, we'll promote it, advertise it in different places. And then usually in this type of position, you know, the mayor or the department director would take some, would take some input for some others, but ultimately would be their final decision, who they picked out of that competitive process.
Okay. Let's, let's keep it to the item on the agenda, which is whether or not to send it to the next Legal Finance. Are you done, Jerry?
I'm done.
Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. Just wanted to say two things. One, I do support the smokeout, because we did approve first reading, and I think it needs to be discussed and then have a vote on it by the full council. So I do support the smokeout. And then, real quick, I'm really impressed that Chad Lewis could name all those presidents, and I bet he could name all of them. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay. Brad Estes.
Thank you, Ms. Mayor. I support the smokeout, and I'll leave my comments regarding the position for later time. Thank you.
Okay. Item 48, the motion to approve. All those in favor? Opposed? One no from John Roberts. Item passes. Now we are going to, public hearing items 49 through 51. There are no speaker requests for those items, so we'll open and close public comment time. And then on to number 49. Backroom Productions, Inc. for a special event wine and malt beverage license for an event scheduled for September 23, 2015, at Barefoot Dance Studio, 412 Fifth Street. Oh, these aren't consent. I'm sorry. Okay. So items, do you, anybody want to remove any of these items? Darla Drew.
I would just like to recuse myself from the vote on Backroom Productions, as I am the president of the group.
All right. Thank you. Then let's have a motion on approving items 49 through 51. Move by Ron Wyfenbach, second by. 49 and 50. 49 and 50. Still have the same motion at second? Wyfenbach, Laurenti? All those in favor? Opposed? Okay, those two items. Forty-nine and fifty. Still have the same motion at second? Wyfenbach, Laurenti? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay. Those two items are approved. Now, on to item fifty-one. Under non-consent public hearing items, approve lease agreement between the City of Rapid City and the Rapid City Club for Boys. Steve Laurenti moved to approve, second Brad Estes. We'll go to Amanda Scott.
Thank you, Mayor. May I ask Mr. Bigler a question, please? Yes, he is still here.
Yes.
Thank you, Jeff, for staying with us all night here. Jeff, like I said, I'm catching up from last week, because I was out of town, but on number fifty-one, when I read it, in the agreement, it said that the property was gonna be described in Exhibit A. There was no Exhibit A. And then I checked later on this afternoon, and there still was not an attachment for an Exhibit A. So, can you please describe what the property is?
Well, I, I can't give you the legal description, because it's got a lot of wording to it that I don't have in front of me, but it is the section of property that's immediately south of the Club for Boys. It's the area that's been used by this organization forever and ever. It's where they've had the Christmas tree sale, where they have their, their gardens and such. This is just, we've had a lease with them for this property for a long, long time. This is just a, an updated lease. We've extended the term of the lease to a ten-year term, rather than, I think the others were a three- or a five-year term previously. So, this is just an extended time period for the, for the lease.
So, it's the property that's contiguous across the street from them?
No, it's just, it's actually adjoining their building to the south of their building.
Okay. So, it's still north of?
North of, of the road, yes. Yep.
Or is that New York Street?
New York Street, correct.
All right. And so, were there any other major changes between this agreement and past agreements?
No, there weren't.
Okay. Thank you. I yield the floor.
Okay. You have a motion and second for approval. All those in favor of this item, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Item passes. On to fifty-two, polyinception.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. There are no changes to the bill list, so the total is that, which is attached at nine million, six hundred ninety-seven thousand, six hundred sixty-eight dollars and twenty-six cents.
Brad, Brad Estes, motion, and Laurenti to second? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Who said that?
Wyf.
One no from Ron Wyfenbach.
Move to adjourn.
Second by Amanda Scott. All in favor?
Aye.